Welcome. We're gonna have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Ms. Garza.
Yes. Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer. Mr. Albrecht.
Here.
Mr. Di Maria.
Here.
Mr. O'Hanlon.
Here.
Mrs. Seberg.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Don.
Here.
Ms. Putro.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Newman's favorite part of the meeting. Are there any additions and corrections to the agendas?
Consent agenda, personnel, ratification of personnel, finance and operations changed to the approved 2021 budget development calendar.
Thank you very much, sir. Next up, superintendents, announcements, and spotlights, Mrs. Radford.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Williams. Dr. Newman, good evening to all our other board members, and certainly good evening to everyone that has joined us tonight for our spotlights and our announcements. I would like to preface this by saying that I am very honored for this, about this presentation this evening. This is not really about a state or a national award, but it is an opportunity for us to recognize a very special group of people in our school division. So before you all join us, as I got a little bit I need to say tonight, I would like to recognize the Manassas City Public Schools Facilities and Maintenance Team. And they are here tonight. I will call them up in just a little bit, but sometimes, you know, we think about during the school year, especially over the summer, people ask us, what do you all do when the students are not here? And I have witnessed firsthand the amount of work that our maintenance team does in our buildings, how many times we've had to call them about events, you know, they pull their resources together to bring things to the facilities where we are. Our buildings look immaculate because of the work that they do. I think I can remember just even a couple of weeks ago, one of our business partners called my office because they had a need for some podiums. And immediately, I said, you know what? I'll do what I can. I called Mr. Russ Helton and asked him, who happens to be the supervisor, director for facilities and maintenance. I called Russ and I asked him if there was anything that he could do to help me bring that together for one of our partners. And he, working with his team and our schools, we pulled it together. And of course, the folks on the receiving end have been very happy that they were, that we were able to assist. But it was something that was over and above what they have to do daily. There was another day that I got a phone call about a tree, some tree limbs hanging over in somebody's yard by one of our schools. And the person said, I don't know if I'm supposed to call the city of Manassas or if I have to call the school district. And I said, hold on just a moment. I got somebody that can help you with that. I called Mr. Helton. They got right on it. The citizen wrote me back and talked about how cordial, you know, the team was in assisting him and everything, just gave so many kudos. The schools give story after story of days that they grab one of the guys, you know, to do something in the building, and it's done. Recently, Dr. Newman and I and several of our staff members went over to the Transportation Department to meet with our transportation team. And as we walked through the building where they are now, I was amazed at how wonderful the building looked. Little did I know at that moment that our maintenance team were the ones that put that together. It was phenomenal. I mean, the amount of carpentry, the, everything that was in there, it was just awesome. And I just, I could not believe, even though I could believe it. But I was just so proud of the work that they do here. Dr. Newman and Mr. Williams also wanted to publicly let the team know just how invaluable they are to our school district. You know, from every level of our schools, you see their faces many, many times when you see them, and they're doing the grunt work. They're smiling, they're talking to the students, they do career days with us to let our kids know about the work that they do in case they want to attain that same level of work and excellence. And so we're very proud of them. They do capital improvements, the day-to-day maintenance, assisting our neighbors in the community when the need arises. They are under the leadership of our executive director, Mr. Andy Hawkins, but also more directly with Russ Helton, who is here tonight. So I asked Russ to join me tonight in recognizing his crew because he can let you know exactly what their role is in the division, but we definitely want to give them their kudos tonight for a job well done for us. Come on, Russ.
Thanks, Al. Dr. Newman, Chairman Williams, members of the school board, it is an absolute honor and privilege tonight to introduce the Facilities and Maintenance Department. Tonight, I'd like to start by recognizing our plumber, Don Mills. Don? Going up to the front. Don is the sole plumber that we have in the division, so he covers over a million square foot by his, by himself. All of the plumbing systems, to include water systems, water testing, irrigation systems, as well as the plumbing infrastructure. We have a larger group of the carpentry team, starting with Dylan Clayborne. Dylan Clayborne has transferred for the HVAC department to meet the, the, the rising demands of our carpentry and building trades. He assists Joe Kazur, who is our lead carpenter. Joe's been with our department for many, many years. He not only does general hardware, but also the large carpentry work. The project that Al mentioned tonight about the transportation trailer renovation, Joe was a very large part of. And to assist with the carpenter department, but also the building and grounds maintenance as our building and ground specialist, Danny Hockman. Moving on to our electrical department, we have Melvin Garcia. To meet the rising demand of, of increasing camera systems division-wide and also the, the changing of technology with our fire alarms and intrusion alarms, we have our life safety and control system specialist, Charlie Truwartha. Moving on to the HVAC department, we have Johnny Arnold. I would like to take this opportunity to allow the, well, to, to let the school board know that Johnny completed his four-year apprenticeship program this summer, and he also graduated top of his trade school class. And with the increase of technology to lead our HVAC department, we have Jorge Najera. The person that pretty much puts it all together, maintenance foreman Matt Barton. The person that oversees capital projects, supervisor of maintenance Steve Potts. And last but not least, our executive director of finance and operations, Mr. Andy Hawkins.
And that's the Facilities and Maintenance Department. And before we take a picture, first I want to give everyone, anyone on the board who wants to say anything, any comments? Anyone wanna?
Yeah, I do.
Mr. Di Maria.
For years, I've been talking about these guys. There used to be nine. I don't know how we got up to 12 or so. Including you guys. But the amount of work that gets done is absolutely incredible. Day-to-day and anything you ask, they get done. There's stuff that they got done this summer, there's no reason they should have been able to get this stuff done. And I see it. And then when we get reports of what we had contractors do and then what our guys did, it, it's just unbelievable, the amount of work you guys do and how well you get it done and how, with the attitude that you get it done, how good you are for our staff and for our kids is just incredible. And I've said for 10 years that our entire staff in this system is incredible. Nobody's better than these guys. I, I, I'm just in awe of the work you guys do, and I appreciate it very much. Thanks, fellas.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sure. I would like to just say one thing. Even on Saturdays, I don't remember who it was, there were a couple of you there on a Saturday, Manassas Reeds, it was blowing windy and you got, they just stepped up, got on a big ladder and secured that banner so it wouldn't blow all over the place, on a Saturday. So we do really, really appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a million square feet, 12 people, I can't imagine trying to maintain 100,000 square feet by myself. And that's good either. You're right. But that's what it works out to, and I really want to compliment this whole team. You know, Russ, especially led by you, this team knows what the mission is, and the mission is educating children. And consistently, over my tenure on the board, this team has collectively insourced a lot of stuff, not outsourced, but figured out ways to take and save money by innovative projects that allow us to repurpose operations money and educate more kids, which is fantastic. So I really, the group, what they do, the caliber of work, the quality of work, everything about it, really, the pride you show in our schools shows in everything people are talking about, how great our schools look. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'll briefly add, I've been on the board about 10 years now, and the work that you guys have done has always been outstanding, but it seems like every year you take it to another level. Dr. Newman and I went over to have lunch with you all one day and talked about some of the stuff that you were doing. I know what you do because I kind of hear about it from Andy and Russ and Dr. Newman, but just talking to you all, seeing the kind of men you are and dedication to our system, that was very impressive to me. So speaking with him, I was like, we have to honor these guys. No team can be great unless every part is great, and you all individually are great in your, in your jobs and your positions, and you help make our system great. So I wanted to thank you publicly for all the work that you do. We honestly and truly appreciate you, and this is a small token of our appreciation, but know that we really appreciate what you do and we're thankful for you. So thank you.
All right, guys. Kind of work your way down this way a little bit. See if you can do this. Yeah. Y'all love each other, that's right. We can come on around, so. Okay. I think this is good. All right. Everybody look this way. You ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. All right. Thank you so much. Great, great guys.
They started sitting down. I got.
They start, they start really early. Yes.
They haven't been home yet.
We appreciate them coming back. They start really early in the day. Yep. Thank you. Okay. Our next announcement will be very brief. A lot of times, people in the community don't always know that our school board members do participate in professional development to become better at what we do as a school division, policy, law, all of the different things that each of you attend, sessions that you go to down in Richmond or Charlottesville through the Virginia School Boards Association. And so the Virgin, the VSB does have an Academy Award for the amount of professional development that you all participate in. Each of you should have already been given, or I think Ms. Garza has, okay, has been given your certificate for the last two years of work that you've done and within the Academy. And so I would just like to announce publicly that we have given out the Certificate of Recognition for Vice Chairwoman Kiefer and Mrs. Garza. And then also, the Award of Excellence was for Mr. Di Maria and Mrs. Robin Williams. She also, they also got a silver pin with that. The Award of Honor was given to Mr. O'Hanlon and Chairman Williams, and a gold pin was provided with that certificate. And then finally, the Award of Distinction, which went to Mr. Albrecht, Ms. Seberg, and Dr. Newman. I would like to note that members who receive the Certificate of Distinction are invited to a very special luncheon at the VSB Annual Convention. So honestly, I just want to say thank you. People don't understand that you don't just sit on the dais and, you know, administer judgment or whatever like that, but there's actually a lot of work that goes into travel and, and perfecting what you do. And so on behalf of the school district and our community, I just want to say thank you to each of you. Good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
We all got something there, but make sure that you know that the time that Suzanne, the superintendent, and Mr. Albrecht put in is incredible. They've got those.
Starfish.
Starfish pins. I got no chance. The, the, the amount of time they put in is, is really incredible on the state level, and it's all back for our kids. And these three, you know, we all got something, which is nice, but those three, it's something that I've been on the board for 13 years, never come close, and I'm not going to. But it's very impressive that they got that, and I want to thank you three very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next up, our board committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Down here? Finance committee, Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Finance committee had our first budget work session last night, reviewed the CIP. That will be presented at a future meeting. We also had a meeting before this to talk about carryover. There'll be a recommendation coming to the November board meeting for discussion, ratification in December. It's a significant carryover because the school system operated incredibly efficiently and effectively last year, and we need to do that because of the decision the state made not to fund some of our programs. So we're using that carryover to pay for obligations we had already incurred because of a late notification from the state. The other really good factoid staff presented to us, and it's really telling, is the level of funding for education in the Commonwealth. Ms. Hawkins gave us some data from 2008 to present, data from the Richmond area. He updated at our finance meeting this evening, going back to 2006. Not adjusted for inflation, just in raw dollars. We receive about twice as much money per student from the state and federal government, but our local funding, which is the overwhelming majority of funding that we receive, has been flat. In that period of time, inflation roughly should have doubled for per-funding population. So when you look at that, as we continue to see increased enrollment, growth in the city, and 2006 is pre-recessionary times, if we take, think about the Great Recession of 2010, 11, 12, that depending upon which political, which newspaper I read or what TV show I watch, we're out of, we should be out of those times, yet we have not been able to, at the city level, recover from that. And that is challenging our ability to educate children in the city. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, board member comments. Before I start, Ms. Putro is not feeling well, so I hope she's watching, and she's probably doing her homework, but if she's watching, we're thinking about you and hope you feel better soon. Thanks for your dedication. First comment, Ms. Don.
Thank you. As we reflect on our past homecoming week at Osborne, I'd like to acknowledge the rejuvenation of school spirit and enthusiasm brought into our schools. It was a great, it was a great week to reunify our school and set the stage for the new year and what's to come. Today, during extended learning time, a superintendent-student advisory council was held, and this marked our second meeting of the school year with our new group. A group of over 20 students were able to discuss the maintenance and plans of our school's sports fields, and in addition to this, we discussed the development of leadership skills that we'll be participating in throughout the school year. Upcoming events in our community include the Baldwin Bonanza, which will be held on October 18th by the Baldwin PTO. Having attended this event in the past, there's so much noticeable work put into it from the parents, students, and teachers. The Osborne Interact Club has various events scheduled to aid in the preparations. Space is still available, and they can be contacted through osborninteractclub@gmail.com. In closing, the end of our first quarter is already approaching on October 16th, and I encourage everyone to keep this in mind as they attend their classes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I wanted to thank Jenny Dean Elementary for inviting me to your house meeting. I was assigned to the House of Dreamers, the Blue House, and so, yes, blue. Go blue. And through, through these meetings, we reinforce character traits and PBI's principles so we can make the school better for everyone and also to build a community among these students. So thank you for that invitation. I look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. I also wanted to wish our Osborne academic team good luck as they head to NBC4 Studios on Saturday to tape their competition. So good luck to all of them. And to our marching band, the Osborne Screaming Marching Band are headed to the competition at Stafford High School on Saturday. So good luck.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams.
I also attended Jenny Dean's House of Friendship. I'm House of Friendship, so I'm on the red team, and it is a competition, go red. I also was, I had the opportunity to attend the Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy that was held at Osborne High School about a week and a half ago. And I had the opportunity to kind of discuss some leadership thoughts to the students, and the discussion was the difference between, I don't want to say anything negative about McDonald's, but McDonald's and Chick-fil-A, since the Chick-fil-A sponsored this, and we're so excited to have them do that, McDonald's, I'm seeing with, they're really lowering the amount of people that you can order your food from, and they're really implementing the kiosks. Where Chick-fil-A, the total opposite, where many, many people, as you're waiting in line, are just, you got one, two, three, four, five people taking orders, and how polite they are. And we were discussing the difference in, in implementing a model in your, your leadership decisions, and I think the people face-to-face are winning because the lines at Chick-fil-A are so much longer than McDonald's. So I was excited that we had that opportunity to have that discussion. And that's all I have today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. O'Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations and thank you to our maintenance team. Unfortunately, I guess they're all gone, but I'm sure they're home watching it by now. Congratulations to our 12 students honored last night at the Youth Salute Awards banquet, including our own Ms. Audrey Don. So congratulations. Just my comment for tonight is elections are four weeks away, and I want to make sure everyone prepares themselves, become informed, learn about the candidates. If you plan on being away, please vote early or by absentee ballot, and no one should ever give up their right to vote. It's something that was hard, fought hard for, and it's a tremendous right. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Di Maria.
Thank you, sir. It's a right and responsibility.
Yes.
So thank you, sir. Everything else that I wanted to talk about, as we talked about, Thursday, we've got volleyball, field hockey, and chorus. Get out and support the schools and your kids. Friday, at John Champ High School, the football team will be playing, and the, it's an away game, so the band won't be playing at halftime. All of our schools are fully accredited. Thank you all very, very much for the work that you do for our children. Accreditation is incredibly important, not as important as our kids. You know, sometimes accreditation is, is the end-all, be-all. The end-all, be-all is making our kids better people and better citizens. But the fact that we've got all, nine of our schools accredited is just incredible, and I salute you and all of you and all of our other principals and staff members. Thank you all very much. October 19th is the reverse raffle. I'm running out of tickets. We're gonna be probably sold out, so if you want dinner for two for $100 and a 1 in 300 chance of winning $10,000, let me know. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Di Maria, for mentioning all of our schools are 100% accredited, and that is a lot for this community to be proud for, to be proud of, excuse me. Ms. Williams, I loved your McDonald's story. There was actually an article this week on Bloomberg. McDonald's is experimenting with big data, and if you want to talk about how our world is changing and how society is changing, they're gonna put software and cameras that will recognize your license plate and know what you like to order, so when you go to the drive-thru, it's gonna say, hello, so-and-so, would you like your usual order? It's kind of scary, but it's kind of cool at the same time, and I think what you think of that has a lot to do with how well you, and how much you embrace technology, but it really talks about how our society is changing and what our children who are graduating today have to look forward to. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Maria.
Well, if you go enough, they know anyway. You know, when you walk into Tony's and they already have your order ready for you, they know who you are, just by your order.
And I'll briefly say, congratulations to all the Youth Salute winners, including our own Ms. Don. I was proud of you for that, and I guess we'll see them all at some point during the year. And I went to the Jenny Dean meeting as well, and Mr. Di Maria, hold your comments. Dr. Newman and I are part of the Black House. Yes.
Why me? Oh, yeah. All right. Never mind.
So I'll just leave that there. Anyhow, moving right along.
Go red.
We are part of the Black House.
Yeah, we know.
That's the color of the house.
I don't see that, what's so funny.
Really?
I would never make comments about that.
Moving right along. Citizens' comments. Seeing none, consent agenda, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move the school board of the city of Manassas adopt the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
Most of Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Di Maria, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, six, zero. Next up, the discussion agenda, and perchance Jenny Dean. Ms. Karen Mills, principal.
I wonder if Ms. Mills had to call her her house.
We're gonna get there. Good evening, Chairman Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. I continue to be grateful to serve the Jenny Dean community as the principal again this year. First, I do want to echo the gratitude that was expressed tonight toward our facilities and maintenance staff. If you didn't notice, we had a lot of things going on at Jenny Dean over the summer. The building looks fantastic, and it was all due in part to their hard work. Anything we needed, anytime we needed it, it was done, and it was done well and quickly. So we really appreciate them for the work that they did. Also, I'm going to need someone to join me in the greenhouse. Anyone interested in the greenhouse, you can join me in the greenhouse, because clearly I heard every color out there except for that one.
Because, no, if you have gas in the greenhouse, you might be good.
I was also absent the day that these two chose the Black House. So, you know, in talking about the house system, which I will talk about a little bit more as we move through the presentation, it goes back to the word "community." And every year, we think about what our mission is, and I was talking today to some visitors that came into the building, and we were talking about what a rich history Jenny Dean has, and that's a history we need to continue to celebrate and we need to continue to build upon. So we really talk about how we want to build a community of lifelong learners. Last year, at some point in the year, Mr. Williams and Dr. Newman had the opportunity to come in and talk with a group of fourth graders in the school. And they didn't talk with the teacher, they didn't talk with that group of teachers, they talked with those students, and they were able to see the motivation that those students had. So our goal is to continue to build on that, and it's more than just academics, like we talked about. The accreditation is great, the learning is fantastic, but it's building on that love of learning and continuing to motivate our students, because when they leave us in fourth grade, they still have a few. I was also absent the day that these two chose the Black House. So, you know, in talking about the house system, which I will talk about a little bit more as we move through the presentation, it goes back to the word "community." And every year, we think about what our mission is, and I was talking today to some visitors that came into the building, and we were talking about what a rich history Jenny Dean has, and that's a history we need to continue to celebrate and we need to continue to build upon. So, we really talk about how we want to build a community of lifelong learners. Last year, at some point in the year, Mr. Williams and Dr. Newman had the opportunity to come in and talk with a group of fourth graders in the school. And they didn't talk with the teacher, they didn't talk with that group of teachers, they talked with those students, and they were able to see the motivation that those students had. So, our goal is to continue to build on that, and it's more than just academics, like we talked about. The accreditation is great, the learning is fantastic, but it's building on that love of learning and continuing to motivate our students, because when they leave us in fourth grade, they still have a few more schools to go through. So, we continue to look at that mission every year, and one of the things that we decided to do this year to build that sense of community, to continue on with that, is the house system. So, we do appreciate your support with that. We have some things we want to celebrate from last year that we continue to build on and continue to do well with. One of those things is that we've been recognized as a program of excellence for technology by an association called the International Technology and Engineering Educators Association. They have recognized us for technology integration within our instruction, and not just the amount of technology we have, but how we're actually using that technology in instruction. So, if you go to that association's webpage, we are one of the first pictures that pops up on their website. We paired with Kid Pan Alley this year through a grant program, and they did a really cool performance all around the novel Clementine, and it was a literacy-based performance where they came into the school and they wrote songs with our kids. And at the end of the program, the kids put on a musical for all of our students, and then in the evening for all of their parents. And then every student that participated in that also got a ticket to go see the huge production of Clementine in Alexandria, and they were able to go and enjoy that with their families. So, it was all original music written to this book, so they turned all the themes of the book into original songs, and that was all done by second-grade students. We also were recognized last year for having the Beginning Teacher of the Year for the Year Two and Year Three teachers in all of the school division through our mentorship program. And our STEAM night and our parent nights, we had increased, marked increase in engagement last year, and I'm going to talk a little bit more when we go to a future slide about what we did in that STEAM night that kind of increased our engagement and really turned it into a student-led opportunity. So, in looking at our results from last year, we noted some areas of strength, and then, of course, our focus areas for this year. In looking at our areas of strength, we'll go into the data in a minute, but you will see a significant increase in math achievement across the board. We also had a significant increase in our Virginia Studies achievement. As mentioned before, our technology integration, we continue to build on that year after year. One way we're doing that is through using Schoology as one of our main sources for parent communication. There is so much that we can do with that in getting our parents involved virtually if they can't be there in person, and so we are building on that and communicating with our parents at least once per month virtually. And then, as I mentioned before, our family nights, our academic and our PTA events, and we continue to build on those this year as well. Our focus areas for this school year all revolve around literacy, taking that literacy, deepening that instruction, and extending it for our students. So, we're going to focus on our small group differentiated instruction and reading and increasing the rigor around our instructional framework. And then, we're really going to look at our Response to Intervention Program for Literacy and looking at analyzing the data, using that data, so when we're targeting our students for instruction, we're targeting the appropriate areas. So, in looking at our Division Goal Number One, which is around learning opportunities and our pass rates for the SOLs, we can see that we did meet both the ESSA and the state accreditation for our math SOL pass rate. Our goal for math SOL pass rate was fifty-five, and we had a sixty-three percent pass rate, which was a twenty-five percentage point gain in math. In our reading SOL pass rate, we did fall short of the ESSA target, but we were able to meet the state accreditation target. So, we didn't change the targets for the next year, they're going to continue to increase year after year, and we'll continue to reach for those. Down below, same thing when you see the literacy as far as the PALS benchmark, and then in Virginia Studies for the pass rate, our target was a seventy, and we went up to an eighty-two, and that was a seventeen percentage point increase for Virginia Studies. Our second goal was around increasing our employee engagement and then retaining our highly qualified effective staff. So, we looked at our teacher retention rate, the target was eighty-four, and we came closer to an eighty-one. There are two other areas we looked at, and this was all based on the Employee Engagement Survey that our staff take in the spring of every year. One of those areas we chose last year was around professional growth and improvement opportunities, because if we're wanting to improve, we need to have opportunities for professional growth and improvement. So, our target there was fifty percent, and our actual was fifty-seven, and that was a, that was over a twenty percentage point increase for the engagement survey that employees felt like they had more opportunities for growth. We also added one on as a baseline for this year and how that ties into morale for the school, so we just have a baseline for this year, and we're going to look at how that's going to affect our morale for next year. We looked at some targeted and ongoing literacy PD that we're building on in the nineteen-twenty school year. We're increasing our opportunities for staff team building and collaboration, and then we started talking about and have now implemented our PBIS house system. Goal three revolves around building those relationships with our community and increasing our communication methods. So, in this one, we looked at our teacher and home communication. So, our goal last year was at least two times per month, we would be communicating with our families, and that would be at the classroom level. One of those was virtually through Schoology, and the other one could be paper. We did meet that, and in most cases, we exceeded that. So, we're going to continue to increase that goal. That's evident in when we are dealing with families and we have an issue, you can tell that you've already got that relationship built. The second one also came from our Employee Engagement Survey, and that's Employees Informed on Important Issues. Our goal there was a fifty-five percent, and our actual was an eighty percent. So, that was over a thirty percentage point increase of employees feeling that they were informed on important issues that affected them. We're also looking every year at building our number of business partnerships. One of the ways we do that is through our increased number of businesses coming to our STEAM night. We've increased multiple methods for employee communications, and we did up our social media presence, and we have our active Twitter page going on, and we actually have a hashtag by grade level, so when our kids came in at the beginning of the year, they were able to pose by their hashtag by grade level, and they're all very illiterative. Our goal four is to ensure the safe and secure learning environment and working environment. So, this goal was set on the findings of our quarterly facility inspections, and you do see the one on there for this year, so we did have one finding this year. Our teachers really like air fresheners, and so that was the finding that was found on our quarterly inspection. So, we're going to continue to look for those things into our proactive walkthroughs to identify our potential issues and then communicate with the staff so they can understand those expectations. Okay, so we move into PBIS for this year, and that is where we kind of revamped everything and we went to our house system. So, we have for all tiers in the school, all staff members, school board members, and all students are assigned a house. They stay in their house for their entire time at Jenny Dean, and they build that relationship with the house leaders. So, we have house leaders and we have house members. I'm the principal of the school, but I'm not a house leader, because that's not my role. We have other people leading the houses, but I do go and I participate and go greenhouse. The students can earn points. So, one thing we did this year is that we took away the dolphin dollars. So, for a long time, we had dolphin dollars. I get a dolphin dollar, I buy something with it, that's great, I have a reward for myself. Now, it's a larger picture. I'm earning points for my team, and I don't want to let my team down. So, they're earning those points, and then we announce them every Friday on the broadcast. We have monthly house meetings that focus on character, school procedures, believing in yourself. We have a different theme for every month that all of the houses focus on, and we are going to have quarterly house celebrations. Our first one is week after next. For our Tier Two, we do have our Behavioral Response to Intervention that meets weekly, and we look at targeted interventions to help students in the classroom. If those are not working in the classroom, we do go to Tier Three, where we're doing a check-in, check-out, and that's with an adult mentor in the building, and then that gives us some daily data monitoring on what's going on with our students. So, for project-based learning, last year, we did participate in Learning Walk to highlight our accomplishments with PBL. One of the coolest things that we did was we flipped our STEAM night, so we had our students actually lead our STEAM night. Where typically, when you're coming into any kind of academic night or STEM night, we have a lot of booths and teachers running things. So, we flipped it, and we had our students leading that through a public product showcase, so the parents could come in, and we had some videos the students created, we had some presentations by our students, and all the students took shifts throughout the night so they could enjoy some of the other activities going on and also had their chance to present what they've been doing in school and have that pride in what they've been working on. We also had some additional teachers trained. This year, we are starting Project Lead the Way, unit modules with our grades Kinder First and Second, and we're going to continue to deepen our understanding of PBL through our 201s. And that's our overall goal of having full implementation by the end of the school year, and by next year, all teachers are implementing projects throughout the year. So, that is Jenny Dean in a nutshell. Thank you for the opportunity to present our school to you guys tonight.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Albrecht.
So, I just, I just have a thought, really, and it's a little more philosophical, and I apologize for that, but it's on school business partnerships. And measuring the quantity, and there's a philosophical discussion of quantity versus quality, but really, the root of it to me is letting business know, we want more than just their money. Our schools are graduating, they're workforce of the future, and we want them to come in and help us, and there's a lot of things businesses can do that don't require them to write a check, whether it's helping and mentoring, whatever that might be. So, having that and understanding and communicating that out to the various parts of the community, the professional parts of the community is just, it's near and dear to me personally.
Yes, I agree with you. Jenny Dean is a school that often gets a lot of donations throughout the year, and I've started having those conversations about the donation of time instead of stuff.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, I'd just like to add, I love the house system idea, and I did have the time at the first meeting, and we won't be too competitive up here. We appreciate being invited to participate, and thank you and the staff for a great presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, Baldwin Intermediate School, Ms. Amanda Wagner.
Good evening, Chairman Williams, Dr. Newman, members of the board. My name is Amanda Wagner, and I am proud to serve as the principal of Baldwin Intermediate So, our mission and vision, we revisit every year, but we make sure that these drive everything that we do. So, through that process, we make sure that this gets at the core of our beliefs about our children and our community. So, we believe that it is a community endeavor and that we will create motivated, confident, innovative, and compassionate lifelong learners. Our vision for our students is that they will achieve their maximum potential, both academically, socially, and emotionally, as a confident and active member of our community. So, some of the highlights that I have here illustrate those things in action. First, we had a student-proposed and-led student government. So, in opening the school, we didn't have a student government, and so students got petitions and signatures together. We had over two hundred signatures, and they had a proposal, a group of them came and gave me a presentation with their proposal of what student government should look like in our school community. And so, I can say, over the course of the last two weeks, we had our school-wide elections where they videotaped themselves doing their speeches, and it went out to students, and the student body voted. We have our class officers and governing body in place currently, so that was something that they took ownership of and made a success. Also, we have project leading through kindness. So, we've done project lead for two years. We're in our third year in coordination with our community partner, Bookworm Central. And we've kind of, in the interest of continuous growth, grown this into project leading through kindness, and so those students that have that leadership opportunity are now looking at ways that they can lead through kindness as opposed to just kind of the traditional view of leadership, and growing that as future leaders and kind students in our community. Also, last year was year one for all of our students, so we again added sixth grade, so we opened again with an additional grade level, full school, and so we utilized that as our baseline year to do a lot of discussion and survey of students, staff, and families so that we could get feedback of ways that we could improve over the course of time. And so, that led, in addition to our vision moving forward, a lot of what we did in our decision-making to ensure that we're meeting the needs of all stakeholders in our school So, in our needs assessment, there were some areas that we found as areas of strength. Our sixth grade reading was a significant area of strength, as well as our grade-six math was also an area of significant strength for us, in, in that area in particular exceeding the state average by a significant number. Student engagement was something that we had, not just through the student government, but many things that they proposed and have brought to fruition in our school community. Staff retention was something that is a point of pride. We had nearly a hundred percent staff retention, and so that was something we were really proud of. And then, the employee and student engagement survey results both reflected very high morale in the school as well as ownership of the school community, which was fantastic. Also, despite the fact that we more than doubled in size last year, we also improved our attendance rate by over three percent. Some focus areas for nineteen-twenty is grade-five reading, and we're focusing on improving that through incorporating writing in all contents, and I'll speak a little bit more about the strategies that we will utilize in these focus areas on the upcoming slides. But grade-five math and grade-five science, so we are focused heavily on fifth grade this year for our areas of focus, and also professional learning communities, and having a monthly focus. And again, I'll speak a little bit more to these in depth. So, you'll see illustrated here, our goal one was to increase student academic achievement. And so, as I mentioned, our sixth grade did outperform our fifth grade last year, but specifically, we're going to work on school-wide, but in fifth grade, we're going to be incorporating a lot of small group instruction to make sure that we're targeting individual student needs. So, we'll do that through math workshop to make sure that we're balancing our whole group, small group, and then one-on-one time with our teachers. Guided reading is something that we're incorporating across the board in fifth and sixth grade, again incorporating writing across all content areas and really focusing on vocabulary in all of our content areas as well. As I mentioned, we're focusing on our professional learning communities, and so we've already had time together as a staff and department to really hone in on not just the way that we plan together, but making sure that we are being the most efficient and effective when we are planning for our instruction, and also that we're incorporating online and print resources for all of our students to make sure that they're getting that balance of both in their instruction. School goal two, to foster a community of excellence and lifelong learning through continuous dedication to a common vision. So, the ways that we will achieve this are, we are going to continue our Husky Huddles and Husky Pride, and I'll speak to those a little bit more at the end of the presentation when we speak about PBIS, but that's something that we are going to continue and are very proud of. Professional learning community PD is something that we are going to be focusing on throughout the year because we're not going to ask teachers to engage in activities and things that we are not fully supporting them and preparing them for to be successful, so we will continue to engage in that throughout the year. We also have a monthly focus, so as I mentioned, that is something where we are taking each month, we will have a focus in our instructional framework, project-based learning, PBIS, as well as safety. And so, we have a myriad of things that teachers are focused on in those areas, and it's not to say that they're not going to maintain their focus in those areas, but sometimes it's easy to get overwhelmed and lose focus on the essentials when you are focused on so many things at once. So, we have professional development and expectations around all of those things, but for support and monitoring, we have one target as a component of each one of those things that we will focus on per month, and that remains consistent over the course of that month, and they will get support targeted to that area over the course through things such as collegial visits, observations, feedback, professional development, et cetera. And then also, our PBIS lessons, not that they will just be taught at the beginning of the year and then the expectation stands. The expectation stands, but we will continue to reteach those expectations and support that students understand that so that we are supporting them and meeting that expectation. Communication with external stakeholders to support, internal and external, to support student learning and operate at an optimal level. So, we restructured our committee meetings this year to ensure that we are keeping our community fully engaged, both internal and external, and so we have our curriculum, our community, and our culture. And so, staff, students, and families are encouraged to participate in those to ensure that we are keeping everyone connected and operating at an optimal level. We'll continue to have relevant professional development for staff around, for example, we have our Schoology platform that was a target for parental communication in addition to these, and so we have a parent course and a staff course within the Schoology platform, so we are continuing to engage and educate our parents as partners within our school community as well as teachers and students. And we'll continue to have that open and frequent communication with parents through that, so that incorporates events coming up at the school as well as things that we're seeing that are relevant to them and their children out in the community or other things that are coming up that we can share with them and support. Policies and procedures to be followed by all to feel secure and proud of our school community. So, through the use of the Schoology Parent Portal, as I mentioned, we will focus on things such as digital citizenship with our children, so students being safe out there online, and so that parents are educated about what's happening with their children and so that they can support as an equal partner, and we will do that both in person and through the Schoology platform. Also, keeping parents and staff and students informed of policies and procedures so that we can make sure that we're continuing to revisit all of those things again in the interest of making sure that we continuously support and revisit. Also, we continue to work to have students and staff and parents involved in our committees and seek their engagement, and make sure that we are, excuse me, engaging them in the school community. Because we want to make sure if we're going to have them be proud of their school community, that they have ownership. So part of that is our Husky Pride, this is PBIS. But our general implementation of that, so this year we started a morning meeting which came out of findings from last year. We started a little bit last year, but now have integrated that into this year. And what that is, is that we are starting each day as a community, a community of learners. And we're starting our day off on a positive note with open communication and getting to that social and emotional well-being of conversation and teaching those skills. How do we have a conversation with one another? How do we interact with one another? And being successful partners in our community that are honest, understanding, successful, and kind young leaders, and starting our day that way. And within that, we have continued our Thankful Thursdays. And we are starting each day with also a moment of gratitude. So in addition to morning procedures, we start with a moment of gratitude, so that you think of three things for which you're grateful for, that you have. And then on our Thankful Thursdays, they share that with their community. So again, just celebrating their overall engagement and well-being. We do have Balto Bucks, where they receive those for following expectations and being a contributing member of our community, of which they can have lunch with a particular individual or for their friends and those types of things. Reflections, if they are not meeting expectations, how we revisit those is that they engage with their teacher and having a conversation. And so that's a lead conversation with their teacher. And we continue to teach those. We will continue to do our Husky Huddles, which is our monthly school-wide, come together and discuss character traits and things that we're seeing, so that we celebrate. Students have voice and choice in that, as well as staff. And they select into those particular sessions. There are three each time, and they get to select into those and engage with their school community. And again, our student government. Project-based learning, accomplishments that we had, 95% of our staff were trained, and we maintain that statistic to date. Husky Huddles, which came out of a project school-wide, continued to be a great success. We continue to integrate gold standard elements throughout our planning instruction. Moving into 1920, we will continue to integrate that, and we'll continue to engage in professional learning through 201s. And we will have that monthly focus through this. So by the end of 1920, staff will feel fully successful and supported in all elements of project-based learning to best support their staffs and their students. And again, collegial visits, where they can observe other staff members and the successful things that they're doing in their classrooms, to bring that into their own. So I'd like to thank you all very, very much for this opportunity. It's a pleasure.
Questions or comments to the right?
I love the Husky Huddle idea, it's great. But thank you for a great presentation, and thanks staff as well. I know a lot of time went into this, we appreciate it. We appreciate the work that you're doing in our schools, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Dr. Donald Fritzkorn, Mayfield Intermediate School.
I feel like this is going to be a repeat of a lot of things. But good evening, Chairman Williams, Dr. Newman and our school board. Thank you again for this opportunity to present our continuous improvement for Mayfield. I'd just like to start off, as the other schools did, with our mission and vision. Our mission is what we do every day. We have 180 missions every year. And what those missions are, is to create our vision, which is our long-term goal. And I have underlined a couple of words here that we really want our students to understand. We had grade-level meetings, and we talk to these students about these words, about being culturally inclusive, because we know Manassas City is unique with the diversity we have within the school. And then the three words that come next, respect, empathy, and responsibility. These came from our staff meetings back in January, when our staff said, these are some areas of focus. And so we're really working with our students to understand what these three words mean and how it relates to what goes on at Mayfield every day. And then once these all come together, the last two words are going to be what is able to take place every day in Mayfield. And that's engaging in student-centric learning opportunities, because we want our students to be participating actively within the instruction. It moves on to the vision. And what we are really trying to hammer home at Mayfield, because we understand that we are all one Osborne, we are all working towards getting our students ready to be Eagles, that we need to work on the five Cs just as much as the high school students are. So we are trying to find ways to make our students display citizenship, creativity, critical thinking skills, collaboration, and communication. I go on to our strengths for the past year. And again, I think it's a huge thing that we emphasize that we are accredited. And it's a great thing when you have all nine schools within the school division accredited. So we are going to continue that. Another big thing we should celebrate is our English language learners. We had a 22 percentage point increase from the previous year. So that was a huge thing. And our ESOL department did a great job teaching and presenting to our staff what our students really need to work on. The second one is, we had a 53% reduction in student discipline referrals. That is huge for us, but we still have room to work. But again, it's time to celebrate some of the successes that we had. And then last year, we also looked at really implementing a lot of rituals and routines that celebrate our students, because we want our students to be proud of where they are. For our focuses coming up to this year, we are redefining our professional learning communities. We revamped our master schedule, so that all math teachers in fifth grade, all reading teachers in fifth grade, they all have planning together every other day. So that's getting eight to 10 teachers together and all on the same page. We're implementing morning meetings as well. And from our goal is, our students are coming again from very diverse backgrounds. We want them to start the day off with an adult greeting them at the door, making sure they feel welcomed and accepted, and building that community within the classroom, which will translate into what they're able to do in the classroom academically, as well as in the school building. We're again looking to provide those student-centric learning opportunities, where again, the students are engaged in the learning. And then we're going to refine our system for improving academic and behavioral student achievement. We move on to our goals, and we are setting some very ambitious goals for the upcoming year. If you look at our ESSA pass rates and our state accreditation pass rates, we are going to set our ESSA and state accreditation at the same, because we really think we can do this with the new schedule that we have in place. We have teachers working in pairs and two-person teaching teams. And what this really did for our students and our staff is it's creating tighter relationships with students, because our teachers went from seeing up to 90 kids a day to they're seeing 60 kids. And they're able to really create those relationships and understand what the students need. We're also, our professional learning communities are going to make sure that every teacher's on board and understands where our students need to be, and are having those talks and learning from one another. The second goal is that our students will be proud members. And I'm sure you've seen, Mayfield is proud. That is one thing that we really are focusing on. We should be proud of what we do at our school every day. We're going to take baseline data on just staff members and students, treat each other with the respect. That'll be through survey results. We want our staff retention rate to increase. We're going to be aiming for 90%, because again, we understand, we want a school where people are learning and growing, so they're also going on to new opportunities. But we want to keep those people there as well. The second one, and this is from a survey result, is the percentage of staff members who refer a good friend to work for MPCS or MCPS. And this is, we hired 16 staff members last year at Mayfield. And a large majority of them came from recommendations from staff at Mayfield. And that's what we want to continue to grow. We want to make people understand that Mayfield is the place to be and that it is a great place to work. And again, we want to work with our students on the chronic absenteeism. So some of the strategies we're doing is, we're holding our student of the month celebrations. We are hosting after-school socia ls for our students, in which our transportation has provided activity buses for our students to get home. We're celebrating student achievements. And again, the morning meetings are another way that we're just emphasizing for students to come into school to be, have that great first part of the day. We want to improve engagement for all stakeholders. This is a huge thing, of just getting our story out there. Share our story at Mayfield, so that the entire community knows all the great things going on. We have a Mayfield Messenger that we send out on a weekly basis using Smore. And thanks to some help, we were able to increase our viewership. We were only, like 200 people were viewing it at one time. And with a little help, we were able to, we're having about 500 people view it every month or every week, so it's keeping people up to date and informed with everything going on at Mayfield. And we want to increase that. We are, again, our teachers are participating in professional learning communities with their colleagues. Because again, we'll achieve more working together. And then finally, we want to provide a safe, nurturing learning environment that maximizes the school resources. And coming into my second year at Manassas City, I got to say one thing is, we are a school division that is very fortunate with everything that we have at our fingertips. This year, we're going one-to-one computing within our school. We're able to work and maximize the resources that we have. And as principal, we want to make sure that our teachers have everything they need to make sure our students are successful. And thanks to the school board, I feel like we are able to do that at Mayfield every day. Our PBIS system is again something that we're continuing to work on. And we have a couple of teachers who have really stepped up in the past year and taken some leadership roles. And we've really implemented a lot of event celebrations, and we have those scheduled throughout the year. We're doing our honor rolls ceremonies once again. We're holding our student of the month celebrations, in which we invite parents in in the morning to share and celebrate with our students. We have our tiered system of intervention. First students with our PBIS, we're providing a lot of support. Our new school psychologist, Ms. Giada, she is having behavior consultations with the admin, with teachers, and with parents. We are getting parents involved in schools. We have our project-based learning. And last year, what we really focused on is the gold standard for instruction, because if we could get that going in the school, that is, that'll help across the board. This year, to really get it going, is we started our school year off in our very first staff meeting with giving our staff a project. And it was to create, to promote our open house before the school year. And we gave them a task, we gave them a project, we followed the gold standard, and they went out in the community, they publicized our open house. And we actually had one of the largest turnouts for our open house that we've had in the past couple of years. And it was a four-hour open house, and our doors were open for four straight hours with families and communities coming in. So it was a great time to celebrate and just show that using those standards, it can work in a lesson plan, it can also work with engaging the community. And we're going to continue working on focusing on our gold standards for instruction, because we want our students really engaged in the learning community. And with that, I'd just like to again, thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to thank Mr. Moore, Ms. Huntley are my assistant principals. We've been really working together as a team. I'd like to thank Dr. Saunders for helping me through my first year and on to my second. And Dr. Stone, who's not here, they're a great resource. Ms. Moore, you've been awesome, and our ELL population is a huge reason that success. The school division, again, I feel so fortunate being here, because we have so many resources, and we have a group of people who want the best for our students. So thank you. And I invite you to come to Mayfield anytime. I'd be willing to walk around, sit with you at lunch. Ms. Potter, she'd be glad to provide lunch for everybody. But thank you.
Comments or questions? First, Ms. Seabird.
Thank you, Mr. Fritzkorn, for your presentation. I just wanted to ask about one thing in your strengths with your 53% reduction in student discipline referrals. Can you share a little bit more how you did that?
We really just focused on setting the tone from the beginning of the year, that we are going to really focus on the students that are doing the great things. We have 900 students in our school, and we can pretty much focus on a small percentage that need the extra support and intervention. So last year, we really started to celebrate the students that are doing the right thing. And it changes the perception, it changes, you start noticing all the kids that are doing everything in the right way, and other students start emulating that. And again, I think it goes back to teachers and their role, greeting students at the door, administrators being out in the hallways and at lunch, and engaging kids in conversation, knowing these kids, engaging the families. It took a lot of hard work, we still have a lot of room to improve, but I think that was a huge success, because we do have a lot of great students doing some amazing things. And our teachers and our staff did a great job at focusing on that part, and other students responded.
Thank you.
Mr. Damaris.
Piggybacking on what she said, but I wanted to say it first, but she did it. You talked about the school psychologist and involving the parents. Thank you. Make sure the parents come out. And I know we've had the discussion before, how hard it is sometimes to get them to answer a phone or whatever, but we have to keep working on that and get the parents involved. And if their child is making it difficult on our children to learn, we need to make it difficult on the parent as well. So thank you very much for doing that. Thank you, sir.
Sure. Mr. O'Hanlon.
Well, I wanted to thank you or congratulate you on whoever's idea it was for your teachers to come out in the community. Because as you know, I was driving around and happened to see some of your teachers, and that caught me completely off guard. And I think it's wonderful, not only for the kids to see them, but the teachers to see where the kids are coming from and kind of learn about our community. Because like you said, you have, what, 14 new teachers? I mean, just so they can get out there and understand kind of that background of the kids and meet them where they are. But that was a great idea and a great program. Well, thank you.
Mr. Oliver. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make a comment on your metric about your percent of staff with referrals. And I love it. Because industry, that's one of the things they measure. And it's one of the best sources of new employees, because they're more likely to stay, they're more likely to be, have affiliation with the company. In our case, it's the school. And I'd actually suggest, as a division, we ought to set a metric for ourselves and challenge ourselves to increase the number of our employees who live here, that they're not only proud to work for us, they're proud to live in 20110, the city of Manassas. And for anybody who was at Fall Jubilee Saturday knows, Old Town was hopping. And those of us who sit under this diocese, we live here, we'd like to see more people do that. So thank you.
Good point, thank you. And I'll say one, two quick things. One, thank you to Ms. Huntley, Mr. Moore for being here. I saw you, Dr. Fritzkorn and Ms. Huntley had a track meet at Mets, taking pictures of a Mets, Mayfield student competing for Mets, which is pretty cool. So thank you for that support. It's just one example of the community and the great things you do. And also your social media presence. I think you may have like set the bar high last year. But I noticed this year that every school is really involved and engaged. And as times change, our families are more engaged in social media than maybe some of us are. So it's a great thing that you do that. And Ms. Brodsky, she posts about the Mayfield basketball, you know, after-school stuff every, you know, day you guys play, which is pretty cool. So thank her for that, let's kind of need to follow it. I'll go that way.
Absolutely.
But thank you for your presentation, we appreciate it. And keep doing what you're doing. Okay, well, the regular portion of our meeting is done. And I think we need a motion to move to closed session.
Sir, I move that the school board enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950, amended for the following purposes. Discussion of Personnel Matters, PERS 1920-0166 and PERS 1920-0081.
Second.
I'm going to have to borrow your laptop for a moment, if you don't mind. Thank you, sir.
Motion by Mr. Damaris, second by Ms. Seabird. The school board of the city of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph from the Code of Virginia 1950, amended for the following purposes. Discussion of Personnel Matters, PERS 1920-0166 and PERS 1920-0081. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, we are moved to closed session, 6-0. Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming.